Good evening. I call this August 17th, 2021 Meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website. On August 20th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. There are two discussion items on tonight's agenda: a master sustainability plan, stakeholder engagement discussion, and a town council roundtable. Kimberly Conley, Sustainability Coordinator, will facilitate our first discussion. It's Conley.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. Thank you for having us here today. Okay, so as the mayor mentioned, we are here today to talk about and give you an update on the master sustainability plan. Specifically, we're going to update you on the stakeholder engagement, which we're actually kicking off with you all. So we're really excited to have this conversation today. We very much want this to be an open dialogue. And so we're also hoping to have some fun. Along with me today, I have Dr. Vicky Faust. She is the consultant that's helping us with the master sustainability plan. So you'll be hearing from her in a little bit as well. Okay, so our session objectives today are to review the master plan, master sustainability plan approach, outline the action plan phases. There are four, if you remember, from my last presentation. We're going to give you a brief report on some of the pieces of the Phase 1 progress to date. We're going to talk about the stakeholder engagement campaign as far as we've mapped it thus far. And then finally, we'd like to conduct the facilitated stakeholder engagement with you So the way that we are approaching sustainability... I can? Oh, great. Whew, thank you. It gets warm under there, doesn't it? The way that we're approaching sustainability is we're really looking for a balance, right? We've all heard about people, planet, profit. So this is really kind of just the next iteration of that, where we talk about planet, prosperity, and people, and all the different ways that these things interact and exchange. So when you want to talk about social justice, and you want to talk about land ethic, and you want to talk about how can we take care of our resources, our land, right, our environment, and how do we make sure that we take care of our people too? So the social aspect is obviously really important. So we're really, we're approaching this as in it needs to be a balance. We're trying to make this as balanced as possible. So just as a reminder, the master sustainability plan will focus on these five focus areas: energy and water, waste and recycling, natural environment, built environment, and transportation. Obviously, this is in progress. We started the plan development as of July, and we are planning to have it done by January 2022, if not earlier. So let's talk a little bit about Phase 1. We actually started kind of compiling utility data in May. It took a little bit of time to pull that together, but Dr. Faust is going to talk about some of our findings thus far in the data, just sort of representational data. But I think you'll be impressed with what we've pulled together. She's going to talk about the baseline assessment, which is looking at our energy consumption as a town. This is not community-wide, right? This is just for town policies, programs, and resources. She's going to talk just a little bit about the greenhouse gas inventory, which is just about complete. We also have a peer analysis, of which we're looking at what neighboring towns are doing and what towns across the country that might have similar growth to Morrisville and similar size. So we'll be talking about that at a later date. We don't have a whole lot of that complete at this point. And then finally, we're going to talk about the synergy with existing town plans. As part of the master sustainability plan, we wanted to make sure that we were looking at all of the various plans that have been done, because there's some really great plans, right? We've got affordable housing and land use and transportation, and our strategic plan, obviously, which has just been updated. All of those things mention sustainability and environment and conservation in different ways, and we wanted to make sure that we were integrating those ideas into the master sustainability plan. So that synergy piece, I mentioned the comprehensive transportation plan, land use, smart city strategy, right, which is how kind of the sustainability program started, right? When we talk about EV infrastructure, when we talk about smart buildings such as building automation system, that's where that came from, and we're continuing to work closely with that team and that strategy. And then, of course, Goal 2, right, where we talk about enriching the quality of life through the preservation of natural resources, well-planned development, and strength in neighborhood vitality. And then Objective 2.3, ensure responsible, sustainable development and redevelopment, reviewing and considering guidance in town policies and plans. So we wanted to make sure that we noted those, how important those are in our process within the development of this plan. And now I'm going to invite Dr. Faust up to walk us through the next couple of slides. Thank you.
Good evening. Part of this master sustainability plan is trying to understand where the town is now in terms of our utility usage, or, I'm sorry, your utility usage. So we've been looking at the utilities, electricity, natural gas, as well as the fleet transportation and solid waste data, and to establish a baseline. So there, with the sustainability master plan, we can move forward and actually use that as a baseline measurement to show progress in the future. We've gathered all the data for all of these different sets, oops, all of these different sets, and we now have those in a central location. So we've come up with a really nice, easy format so that we, in the future, can use the same data sets, again, to measure off of this baseline. And this is just going to help the town make better decisions in terms of projects that they want to do, in terms of, that you want to do, in terms of sustainability. And this data is also going to be used to create the initial greenhouse gas inventory. Again, once we have the initial greenhouse gas inventory, then that will serve as a baseline, and moving forward, projects can be put together so that it's, so that you're able to understand what that project can do to help reduce the greenhouse gas inventory in the future. So with our utilities, their annual use for the water, we're at about 1, 2 million gallons, and this is the equivalent of 130 homes. So again, this is just for the town operations. This is not for any of the larger community. With natural gas, about 31,000 thermes, which is how we measure natural gas, and that's equivalent about 40 homes. And then with, excuse me, I'm sorry, our, the electricity is about 1.3 million kilowatt-hours per year, so it's about 120 homes. So electricity, really, in terms of the utility, is kind of the biggest user of carbon. Oops, I'm doing this wrong. The transportation fuels, about 57,000 gallons of gasoline was used in 2020... Oh, thank you. I hit the wrong thing. I'm technology challenged sometimes. So 57,000 gallons, again, this would be used in gasoline for the fleet, for the town, and then diesel, about 13,000 gallons. The town uses telematics, which actually monitors the vehicles, and telematics real, from that information, we found that idling costs were about $700 per vehicle. So I know at an earlier meeting with the town staff that is participating with the sustainability master plan, that at least one of the departments is really kind of already being proactive with that and put together like an idling policy. I know that's not always possible with vehicles. Sometimes they have to remain idling, but that is something that can be looked at to reduce cost easily. Solid waste, the town is doing a really good job with recycling participation. It's gone up, as you can see, from 2016, '20, and '21, is, oh, it's gone up, I'm sorry, 2019, '20, '21, has gone up each year, and that's something that I know Kimberly wants to continue focusing on, to increase recycling. When we dove down into the weeds a little bit more with it, we could see certain routes for waste and recycling participated more than others. We don't understand why, but we understand that it does. So again, this is where the data is really going to help us, just the more we can get into the weeds with the data, we can really tickle out some observations that can be used to help drive the sustainability in the future. And I'm going to turn this back over to Kimberly to talk about Phase 2, the engagement campaign.
So the engagement campaign, and we will take Q&amp;A at the end of the presentation, so please do document your questions as we move through. We plan to do the engagement campaign through September, and our various audience groups are really everyone. We want everyone to participate. We want diverse voices. We want all voices. So we're working very diligently to make sure that we're reaching out to the right groups, to make sure that that diversity happens. That also includes the obvious residents, businesses, their employees, town employees, our sustainability task force, which is basically our town staff, advisory committee members, nonprofit members of various organizations, community members, houses of worship, and of course, you all are involved in that stakeholder engagement as well. Various tools that we're planning to use for this include, obviously, social media, the town's website, and the online survey is what you'll be looking at this evening. We wanted to produce that for you. Before we put it out to our community, we wanted to make sure that we're hitting all of the high points, right? All of the focus areas are correct. And if we're missing anything, we'd like to add that before we finalize it and distribute it to our community. We're also hoping to do some focus group facilitation, based on what happens with the Delta variant, obviously, but we're hoping to do a couple of different in-person focus group facilitations where we can really have more of a dialogue, you know, most similar to what we're doing with you all tonight. We'd like to have more conversations about the survey and the topics within the survey. So I mentioned the sustainability task force. Really proud of this. So we have representation from all town departments on this task force. And the reason that we pulled this together, and we had folks coming to us and saying, can we be, you know, can we be a part of this task force? Because we have lots of folks that are passionate about various aspects of sustainability throughout the town. So it's really an opportunity to make sure that, as we're developing projects and goals, that those who have been here, those who understand institutional knowledge, historic perspectives, can, you know, from their department's perspectives, can bring that to the table, because those are really important, to make sure that we, the goals that we set are attainable. So we're making sure that we have all of those voices and ideas at the table. So the little, the wordplay there at the bottom, word cloud, we conducted some sort of a collaboration with flip charts, as similar to what we're going to do with you here, and asked, you know, what does sustainability mean to you, right? And so you can see how that sort of fleshed out. So we have, efficiency is very high on the list, environment, resources, reduction, future. So when you think about those things, right, that's what your town staff, from the task force perspective, thinks is most important when they think about sustainability. So as part of their, the homework for the sustainability task force, we started kind of making a list of all the various initiatives that we've already done as a town. We talk about oftentimes that sustainability, the official program, the formal program may be new, but sustainability is not new to the town. And so it's really important that we document all the ways that we've already been sustainable and try to quantify those ways, and that information will be included in our ultimate master sustainability plan at the end, our conclusion. So just kind of some fun things to talk about here, right? The solar array is really fun to talk about. That's a success. Building automation systems, we're in the process of putting together a pilot at the Public Safety Building, where we are making that building smarter, and we will be able to have more control, more proactive control, over things like HVAC. So that's a really, that's a great, that's a good project, a good win. We have the recycling participation and contamination reduction program, which will be kicking off very shortly here. And that's the project where we received some grant money from DEQ to help us do some outreach and education to our residents that are served by GFL Roots. And it's really an opportunity to share with them what goes in your curbside recycling bin and what doesn't. So we'll have, in addition to mailing out some magnets for that, to all of our 6,300 residents that are served by GFL, we'll also have an extensive social media campaign, which is going to be supported by, dedicated to our community, and see that's a leadership, or youth leadership group that has chosen to support sustainability for the next year. And so we're really happy to have their participation. We've also identified and participated in a couple of no-cost programs through Duke Energy. One of those includes Fire Station Number 3, where we were able to get energy efficiency information, including carbon reduction, and all kinds of recommendations, to make that station as efficient as possible. And in some cases, we've used some area benchmarks, and we're actually exceeding some of our peers in that way. So I'm really happy about that opportunity. And that was, again, just a no-cost program through Duke. Obviously, we have the hybrid purchase policy, and I know none of this is new to you all, so I apologize. Vicky mentioned the idling policy that the police department has enacted. You know, we're doing things like recycling batteries, recycling paper. We talked about Fire Station 3. They're going to have a myriad of different opportunities when it comes to sustainability options. And so all of these bullet points, all of these listed items came from the task force. They said, we said, what have you, what has your department done to support sustainability? And they started raising their hands, and we just started listing everything and documenting it all, because it's really important that, it gets us thinking about all the ways that we are already doing sustainability, even if it's, hey, we don't print our annual report anymore, now we only share it electronically. Well, that counts. Everything counts. So it's just kind of changing a mindset and making sure that folks are thinking about all the different ways that they're, they're supporting this already. You know, we've done some facilities, a bunch of facilities, efficiency improvements, including we have an HVAC replacement policy, LEDs, right? We've converted most of our lights to LEDs, which has been a tremendous savings for us. And EV charging stations, right? We have two, and we have one more that's going to be finished very shortly. So really happy about that. So Phase 3, that's the phase that comes after the stakeholder engagement piece. This, what we're showing here, that phase, sorry, that phase is the investigation and analysis aspect, and that's where we start to look at, what have we collected for stakeholder engagement? What have we collected for peer analysis? And how have we quantified all of the projects we've already done as a town? We start to look at those and say, what types of things, what types of projects could we actually do, right, to support our ultimate goals? What's reasonable? So this, what you're looking at here is sort of this guiding principles chart, and this is a chart that I, I am borrowing from, from the City of Durham. Ours will not look exactly like this, but it provides the sustainability task force a way to rank importance of different projects that we might be looking as a part of this investigation and analysis phase. So what is the impact? What's the operational feasibility? Is it cost-effective? What does the public think about it? And how does it align overall? So that will be another to-do on the sustainability task force, is to come up with something like this, the criteria and scale. And then ultimately, Phase 4 is where we set goals, the most exciting part of the project, I think. So we take the assessment, the energy consumption, GHG inventory, the engagement results, the analysis, and the investigative ideas and analysis, and we start to determine what's feasible for the Town of Morrisville to set for different sustainability goals. What does that look like? We're anticipating the timeframe for that aspect of the project to happen between November and December of this year. So really excited about that. So at this time, what we'd like to do is conduct the stakeholder engagement with you all. Again, this is an opportunity for you to give us feedback on what you feel is most important, and it's an opportunity to, if we're missing anything in the survey that we plan to put out to the community, we want to know that from you now, because we want it to be as complete as possible. So I'm going to invite Dr. Faust back up to give you some direction on where we're taking this. There will be lots of opportunity for dialogue, so I know you won't, but please don't be shy. Thanks.
You don't look like a shy bunch to me. So we're going to do something that's a little interactive. Kimberly had sent the survey out to all of you, and there are three questions that we want to kind of focus on tonight, and we would like to get your feedback on how you would rank these different questions in the survey. So at the back of the room, we have questions 1, 2, and 3. And what we would like you to do, we've given each of you some nice little round stickers. So we have, the first one to the very far left, your, this left, is pink, and then green, and then orange. I think that's orange. Yeah. I can't see very well. So if you'll take, on the first chart, and just mark your top three, so rank those, and you don't have to write a number, just 1, 2, or 3, with your pink sticker, and then in the middle one, with your green sticker, your top three, and then on the far right one, with your orange sticker. And then once everybody has put, placed their stickers, then we're going to come back and have a conversation about that. So let you get up now. Thank you. I thought you were going to ask me something. You just finished quick. You finished quick.
I am pleasantly surprised. Aren't you? This is a good way to do stuff like this. Hello? Guess it is one.
We're trying to do a tally really quickly.
Thank you all for your patience. Just want to make sure we get this right.
Ma'am.
So question one was traditional sustainability thrives from a balance of environmental, social, and economic factors. Please rank your top three priorities as they relate to sustainability for the town. So our number one was food waste and recycling. We are doing, and when I say we, I'm just joining the town, the town is doing a really good job, again, with the recycling, but from my understanding, the food waste is an area that we could really look at doing, food waste recovery, composting. There's a lot of different things that can be done with food waste. We can even turn it to energy. The number two is environmental protection, so we're going to have a conversation about that, so protecting the beautiful town that you have. And number three, renewable energy. I know you already have a renewable energy solar project, and already doing some things with some EVs, so you're already moving in the right direction, and it sounds like that this is a direction you want to continue to move into. I will go through these, and then we'll go back and discuss them. What are the top three things you do to be more sustainable in your home or community? Number one, seems like most people recycle. Number two, conserve water. And number three, incorporating renewable energy. So there seems to be a little pattern here. And then, how can Morrisville mitigate the effects of climate change? Please note your top three. So here, plant more trees to capture carbon. There's beautiful trees already in Morrisville. But to have more would definitely be helpful to, again, work on the carbon capture. Number, the next one would be promoting renewable energy and energy efficiency. Again, there's kind of a theme going here. And the third one was develop town policies or ordinance that support mitigation efforts. And I just have to say, I really applaud you for that one. So let's go back and talk about question one. So please rank your top three as they, three parties, as they relate to sustainability for the town. So everyone talked, this was the most popular, food waste and recycling. So I would just like to give some feedback from the council in terms of, what would you like to see in terms of food waste specifically, because I know that's not being done, and then also how you would like to see anything done differently in terms of recycling? So I'm going to open it to the floor.
Okay. We use little things, so I can help facilitate this part. I saw Donna Fender, Councilmember Fender first, and then Councilmember Robati.
Thank you.
Well, mine was up because I had questions about the presentation.
Okay.
I don't have a comment about food waste.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll address those after we go through these.
Yes, there'll be content at the end.
Councilmember Robati, followed by myself, please.
So in terms of food waste and recycling, I think that people still make, there's still a lot of misunderstanding about what you can and can't recycle, and I think it would be great to have, like, a refrigerator magnet or something like that, that we could mail out to people, just, you know, don't put the pizza box in there because it's got oil in it, you know, like a yes/no. And following up, on the website, we could put, like, a quiz, because I really do believe that people will take a quiz on literally anything, and, you know, like, how smart are you about recycling? And like, you know, make it easy enough for kids and interesting enough for adults, and I think those are two things we could do that would be comparatively low-cost efforts, but that might result in a really increased understanding of the whole subject.
I think that's a, those are excellent suggestions, and I found with quizzes and things like that, once people know something, it's kind of hard to unknow it after you've taken a quiz, so it really does help people with their memory. And I'm going to let you speak, Kimberly, about the DEQ program just a little bit more and answer to that first one.
Yeah, thank you. So we are mailing magnets to 6,300 of our GFL recipients, and it'll be almost exactly what you described. So it's artwork that DEQ actually created, and it's statewide, so it's the same across the state. So it's very clear in do's and don'ts. And I agree, because things are changing so quickly, it's really difficult for folks to keep up with it. Pizza boxes is a great example. They're now acceptable at our material recovery facilities, and that's new. We just learned that when we went on a tour a few weeks ago. So yes, please, more education. I love that idea, and the quiz is great, too. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak up about either food waste or recycling?
Yeah, I'd like to add, if we as a town can incentivize or give away compost bins for people's yards, like the Earth Machine or something, I know Wade County sells those, but if we can give them away really cheap, that'd be really good. Also, I love the magnet idea. Another thing in the future maybe is having an app where you scan a QR code, and it tells you whether it's recyclable or goes in the trash. So that would take some work, and, but those are two things that would be nice to have. Councilmember Caramello, please, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Yeah. One of the things about food waste is, I am one of the person who does it, and I'm sure everyone. We just buy too much, and we store it in our refrigerator. When it expires, we are throwing it. What kind of civic engagement can we do to basically say, buy only what is needed, so that at least that's, like, we're always looking at the after effect of how to, you know, compost the food waste, but I'm like going a step farther. Like, I go to Costco, like, if I had to just get milk, my bill is $200. And that's a common theme that we are doing time and time and again, but it would be good to start educating, you know, like, buy only the stuff that you really need, and then you can go back again. It's not the end of the world, kind of a thing. That will help the down chain of food waste, because I think that education is missing in each one of us. I can, I don't know for everyone, but I can certainly vouch, because that's a common theme.
That's a great idea, and it sounds like that that might could be something that could be integrated into the app as, like, you know, suggestions, regular suggestions on how you can reduce, so you don't have to recycle or compost or... I know I started really being very specific with the grocery list and writing a full menu for the week and doing a grocery list, and just doing that one thing really saved us so much in waste.
Councilmember Rao, please.
One of the things that I like to, that I've researched in the past, is programs that incentive residents to recycle more. So one example that we've looked at in the past is Pay as You Throw, where, you know, the more you recycle, the less of a fee that you pay. The challenge is, it's hard to change the behaviors, the way they do it in some, there's a local company that actually did it. They actually give you certain bags, and they generate the revenue by selling the bags, but you only, they have their own logo, and you just basically, the more you recycle. So with the way, it is, our rate is embedded in our tax rate, but for some, we're looking, exploring having a fee. So this is what they call a Pay as You Throw fee, where the less, the more you recycle, the less fee you pay. I don't know how they do it, but apparently this model saved, reduced solid waste footprint by $800,000 to $900,000 over like a year in some jurisdictions. So it might be something we can explore at the committee level, maybe, just in terms of these kinds of, you know, innovative programs, so.
Well, and with the data that we're collecting and with the baseline that we have, that's something that we can actually quantify and, you know, evaluate whether that's successful or not.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Johnson?
So I actually really love that idea. I love that idea of somehow incentivizing folks, and when you incentivize financially, it usually hits home, it hits your pocket, and it usually works, usually, not all the time. I do know, many years ago, when we talked about, I don't know whether it was when we were renewing our contract for solid waste, or we were just changing out the rollout carts. The recyclable cart and the solid waste cart are just about the same size, and I advocated for a large recyclable cart, but to keep the other cart smaller. So that was an incentive, or would potentially be an incentive and a visual, that we really want you to recycle more. Right now, the visual that I know I have in my home is that I have plenty of room in this container, and I have plenty of room in that container. So I think we need to think about that moving forward, too. And although your data that you shared with us tonight, Kimberly, about how we are doing well in recycling, at least from 2019, 2020, and 2021, it doesn't surprise me, because our committee has focused, and our staff, too, has focused on that for many years. And so I guess that's the other lesson, that you need to keep up, you keep your eye on the end game, keep your eye on the ball, and eventually you get there, and it may take a number of years, because these figures did not always look like this, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I was a bit surprised that the percentage of people participating in recycling was only in the 60s. So besides the magnets, are you guys going to do other initiatives to increase recycling
That's something that's being evaluated right now, is what are the best options? So at this point, it's kind of exploratory, looking at what's the best options, and then they will be presented, and that's what will take place in the third, in the third phase, where we'll evaluate from, you know, what's going to be most efficient for the town to do, you know, what can be done realistically, how much it's going to cost, and then kind of Pareto the different options to see, you know, what's going to give you the most bang for your buck kind of thing.
I really like Mayor Protam's idea of having a larger recycling bin than the trash bin, because I know, I run out of room in my recycling bin, and I also have plenty of room in my trash bin.
I'd rather save the space in my garage quite frankly.
Yeah, and to that point, you know, yes, we are doing other things to promote recycling, not only recycling participation, but also contamination reduction, right? So trying to get folks to stop putting those retail plastic bags in their, in their recycle bin. That's about the worst thing you can do. So we are working with Doc and C, as I mentioned, they'll be doing a pretty extensive social media campaign, they're doing videos, all kinds of fun things, really to kind of reach out to their peer groups, right? So we want to make sure that we're advocating and encouraging the younger kids to get involved in that as well. So we are working on that. And then MESC will also be looking at these options as well, because we look at the solid waste and recycling data on a regular basis now, so we'll be working toward that.
Did anyone else want a first round at this, before we do a second round? Okay. Councilmember Robati, please.
Could we put mini recycling centers around town, like one at the library, maybe where you could just drop off, like, plastic bags from Harris Teeter and magazines, two things of which I have way too many in my house right now.
So the things that would not normally go in the recycling bins?
Yeah, it's things that you, things that you have way too many of, because you know you're going to recycle them at some point, but that don't go into the recycling container in your house, but if you're going to the library, if you're going to the farmer's market, if you're going to, you know, wherever, like, maybe that's someplace where you could bring that stuff. I mean, you can bring pills to the farmer's market now, so maybe you could also bring grocery, plastic grocery bags, and, I don't know, whatever you guys think, like magazines, newspapers, I don't know what doesn't go in recycle at home, but I know those are two things I have way too many of in my house now.
Or maybe even e-waste, too. Like batteries and...
Yeah.
And because I know a lot of people, there are a lot of towns that'll have, like, a hazardous waste place to take those, but people might do a lot more of that if there were more convenient drop-off locations. That's a great idea.
So I know we showed the recycling participation. Do we also collect that for trash using RF codes or not?
We do have that data, I just don't have it on the, we don't have it on the PowerPoint.
That's fine. One other thing about the recycling is the considering modeling behavior that we want to see, like, eliminate single-use plastics here at Town Hall, or in all our facilities, and then move forward from there with those types of initiatives, encouraging retailers to not use plastic bags, but to have reusable bags, like Trader Joe's is famous for trying to do that on their own dime, but if we can get in that space, too, and help out, would be two other possibilities. Circling to Councilmember Caramella.
One thought is, I saw some of the slides that you were showing of, you know, the recycling data. I, for some reason, I feel we are not pushing hard to use the recycling data and the trash collecting data hard enough in a way, like, we can, if you, if the data is there, if we can basically pick subdivisions to subdivisions, how the recycling is doing, you know, that would be, and put it on our town website, you know, this is the overall, you know, Breckenridge is recycling more, you know, I'm sure this one is not, and these are the common themes why you can bring your recycling up. So kind of a healthy competition among the neighborhoods, which overall helps the entire town. And the same, I would say, for electricity, you know, if you can get with, you know, Dominion and say, the subdivision, how much electricity they are using compared to the other neighborhoods per household, you can easily split it up. It will show, you know, the usage is more, and same with water, because town of Cary knows exactly how much water is getting emitted into town of Morrisville, and if that can be split into, you know, subdivisions, that gives a better view, and then incentivizes the residents to basically have this friendly thing, okay, how much sustainable each community is and each subdivision is.
Councilmember Caramella, thank you for that. Actually, Rick, Ralph, and I have been discussing different ways to use the new open data portal to do exactly what you're referencing. We are going to pilot the recycling participation data in the next couple of weeks, actually, to try to encourage that competition and show folks without, you know, penalty, but it'll just show roots, right, and who could do better, so that is something that we plan to share in the near future, so look for that. Thank you.
Okay, so we allocated an hour for this. Are you hoping to do each slide, each of those sheets, three on each?
Yeah, sorry.
Because we could talk forever on each of these, so just trying to help you manage...
No, I appreciate that. So we'll move to the next one, and we'll try to move a little bit quicker. So environmental protection was another party for the town, so again, just kind of to open it, or suggestions, things that the council would like to see in terms of environmental protection for Morrisville.
Could you like give an example or two? Oh, I recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
When I looked at environmental protection, two things came to mind. One is stormwater, just, we have a great, robust stormwater program, and we want to make sure that we protect our water as well as trees. We are working very hard on our tree ordinance, our UDO, to do what we can to preserve trees, so those two things are very top of mind for myself, as well as I'm sure the rest of the council.
Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I think there's a lot we can do to protect our stormwater, because I've participated in a few of the litter sweeps and the stream cleans, and I'm really surprised at how many plastic bottles end up in our streams and in our stormwater. And I'm thinking it's most likely not on purpose, it's just negligence of leaving, setting a plastic bottle down, and then when the rain comes through, it ends up in our stormwater. So I think there's a lot we can do there. You know, I don't know what the solution... You know, I don't know what the solution is. I'm sure a lot of it has to do with education. And then I think, you know, priority for me is protecting the trees that we do have from being clear-cut. And that's where, like, I think in the third question, you had, you know, changing our policies is important to be able to protect the environment.
Well, and the other one over here that was very important was planting more trees to capture carbon, so obviously there's a lot of tree hangers. And I mean, that's nicely...
And I believe, I was going to say...
Any other comments about...
I just wanted to comment, speaking about the litter and the, our streams and things. Some states have deposits for containers, and that's going to be a heavy lift, because that's a statewide thing. But that's something to keep in the back of our mind, if we can advocate for some kind of five- or 10-cent deposit on all containers. Grocery stores, et cetera, push back hard on that, but it's good for the environment, and there's a lot less litter in those states.
Absolutely.
Seeing none other, you can move on.
Okay. So number three was, as far as top three priorities, was renewable energy. So again, the town's already doing, has done a solar project and some EV projects. So going forward, what, you know, are your, what would you like to see?
Councilmember Fender?
Our involvement, what I would like to see is our involvement in the Soul Start Program, and I think Kimberly has already got that on her list. But I would like to see the town do more to promote private businesses, private citizens to install renewable energy, in addition to the town.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Are there grants available to, or I think we should explore the idea of obtaining a grant, that maybe we could either pass on to people that do put solar panels or other forms of renewable energy on their homes, or alternately, we could use that money to put solar panels on other town buildings. Like, I think we, it seemed like electricity was a big, was a big carbon generator for us, so I mean, I think it would be great to, you know, to get some solar panels on that. And, yeah, that's what I think. I think we should, you know, I think that any grant money that we can get or that we can use would be great.
I know that Kimberly's looked into some of that, and is already aware of some grant opportunities, like through Duke Energy, and I know some cities are looking at using like the recovery funds that are coming out to do that kind of infrastructure projects, so that might be something.
More legislative was also the idea that Duke Energy sometimes makes it less easy to have solar panels, so that's more of a long-term, try to make sure that people are getting their value and ROI to encourage that. Mayor Protim?
So I know this one's a stretch, but we have HOAs here in town that have criteria and requirement when it comes to solar panels on rooftops. For instance, I know there's one where you can't have solar panels on your roof that can be seen from like a road. And I know that that, and sometimes that's the best place to put a solar panel, so therefore the household doesn't have a solar panel, because they can't in the HOA. So I do think we need to keep on our radar, that it's important to change and have some overall, either state law or federal law, that overrides all that. And I think back to satellite dishes. When satellite dishes became popular, HOAs restricted them as well. And then FAA came out and overruled all that, and now you can have a satellite dish on your roof in a location that makes it successful for your home. So I think we need to keep this renewable energy, especially solar, front and center, and look for those opportunities to help advocate, because I think, I think the time will come, and it's just that we need to rally when that time comes, and do what we can in the meantime to keep pushing this notion that it's important, and HOAs need to kind of come up with the times.
Okay.
Because, and I'll add real quickly, because most of the residential homes in the Town of Morrisville fall under some HOA, and a lot of them have some kind of restriction.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
No, that's a good point, Liz. I think in Breckenridge, we allow both sides, because typically, ideally, they like south-facing, where they get maximum coverage of the sun. But if you are already a south-facing front house, and if you restrict them, then pretty much it's taking that thing away from you. I know, I think Kitscrete doesn't allow on the front, but I think, looking at a bigger picture, we basically said, if the person is coming forward to put the solar panels and spending the money to do that, we should not be the person restricting that. So that's actually a good point.
So, yeah, and so if I can follow up real quick, so you just brought up something that you, we can help advocate on behalf of our residents right now at the HOAs here in our town, and also advocate at a state or a federal level, but we could do that right here, right now. So I'm glad Breckenridge allows it.
This is more for architecture, there's not even a governance or anything like other bylaws. It's, we stretched it very quickly, because we were getting more and more people doing it. Makes total sense.
Do you have people that have put solar panels on the front of their...
Yeah.
Okay. Because our Kitscrete doesn't allow it, and they said they, like, did a survey, and they said no other subdivisions in Morrisville or Cary allowed it, so they didn't want to be the first ones.
We have at least, I know...
But if Breckenridge is doing it...
On my street, Stephanie Dunn, she has front-facing, and many people have.
Okay.
Yeah, because the HOAs are people who live in the town, so it's a matter of influencing and changing minds over time. Councilmember Rabadi?
Yeah, really quick. So I don't think, I think that people may not know that they don't have to blanket their whole roof with solar panels either. Like, you could put a solar panel on a post outside your house. So that's, I mean, maybe like a solar energy fair, where we invite some solar panel companies to come and give out some swag, and we get some food trucks, and everybody learns about solar energy and recycling, for that matter. Like a, you know, like maybe time it with Earth Day next year, that'd be great. And the other thing was, what if we, all right, wait, solar panels? Oh, when we're like in the town center, and like there's going to be a parking garage, maybe we could have a solar panel farm. It would, A, cover the cars, so they wouldn't heat up as much when you're parked, but also, I mean, that would generate a ton of energy, and maybe we could recycle, we could take some of that energy that's, that goes in there, and somehow spread it out among our affordable housing units in town, and give them a break on their energy costs at the same time, as we give them a break on their rent. I mean, it might be a little extra paperwork for Duke, but...
Love that idea.
Sorry.
Not seeing any other comments on that sheet?
Very robust discussion, thank you.
So what are the top three things you do to be more sustainable in your home and community? We could talk about this some, but I can just already tell you're all very passionate about recycling, and I just applaud the entire council for your dedication to that. Conserving water, I know that was brought up with a couple of folks around your stormwater. So maybe if we want to spend just a few minutes talking about water conservation, if you have any ideas around water conservation, either for the town operations or the...
Okay. Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Protim Johnson, please.
Just real quick, similar to what the mayor was talking about with giving out compost bins, we should do the same with rain barrels. I think you may be able to purchase them through Wake County, but we should make, like, you have to go out and dig for that information, and where to go to get it. I mean, it needs to be more accessible for people. I mean, I have a rain barrel, I mean, and putting it in is not that big of a deal. And I'd like to see us, you know, implement rain barrels, multiple rain barrels on municipal buildings as well.
Donna, what can you do with the rain, like, once you catch the rainwater, I'm sorry, excuse my ignorance, I, but what can you do with the rainwater once you catch it? Is it hooked up to your water system in your house, or how does that work?
No, I use it to fill up my watering can.
Oh, okay.
To either water my house plants, or plants outside in pots.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Johnson?
So I'm going back to working with the HOAs again. I've never, I've never received this ding letter, but I've had neighbors who have received a ding letter from the HOA saying that they're not taking care of their lawn. And it typically happens during the summer, when your lawn kind of burns out, because it, and I'll tell you what, I refuse to water my lawn. I do not water my grass. I haven't watered my grass in, I don't know, decades. So I think that's a total waste of water. I do, I do water my plants, I use the green barrel, too, to help, but sometimes that's not enough. But maybe I need more rain barrels. But anyhow, I think working with HOAs, and going back to, some other folks talked about education, I think all of this is going to require a great deal of education with our communities, so that they understand the ramifications of all the decisions they're making today, and how to make more thoughtful and better decisions. And I think they're open to this. I think, I think they're open to hearing what they can do, I think they want to help. So I think education's going to be a big piece. And I might as well add this right now, because you asked it on the last question about what you want to see, so I'll just throw this out there right now. I would love to see a Morrisville Sustainability 101 class, where those residents that are really interested in this topic can, can come over, I don't know, whatever, you all decide, number of days, hours, whatever, and can learn about all of this, and how they can bring it back and incorporate it in their community, in their neighborhoods, and then share with everyone. I think that would be incredibly successful.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
So also, education about native plants, and how that can save things, we're going to talk about lawns and things like that. Also, Town of Cary is pretty much our water provider, and they have different programs that I don't know how actively we support, like their block leader program, to try to get rain education out to people. So maybe generate a stronger partnership with Cary, and try to just amplify their efforts, because I think they do a lot. But I think some of our people are falling through the cracks, because it's not our town talking to them. And just use their, their water bills to promote some more of our thoughts and our programming, too. So that could be a win-win both ways.
So water conservation for the residents?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's going to save them money, and, and it did.
Okay. Did you want to go again? Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I forgot about something else I was thinking about. I don't know if this would be to conserve water for the town, or a way for them to use less water. You know, I don't know how much water we use with sprinklers and watering the plants that we put out, but if we implemented a policy where we're, have less grassy areas and more native plants, perennials, wildflowers, and in that way, you would get, well, you would get three benefits. One, less water usage. Two, less gasoline or diesel needed for mowing. And then three, promoting planting pollinator plants.
Looking to see if you guys can react to that before I acknowledge the next person.
No, I just have to say, the knowledge here is just, I have to applaud you all.
Okay, thank you.
Not every town, not every town is so well-read in this subject.
Okay, Councilmember Ral, we set the bar high. Make it good.
You know, I mean, just to follow up with what Mayor Protim said, I think everything we're talking about is so important, to just have better education, because I'm, I've been, I've been reading a lot more books about sustainability, because I've really never kept up with it. But I think part of the problem is that you hear a lot of big directives at the national level, you know, Biden administration wants to reduce carbon emissions by 50% by the year 2030. And then you look at the UN report that just came out, with just in 10 years, water temperatures go up two degrees Celsius, four degrees, you know, you're going to see climate change that we've never seen. And I think just, you know, we have a sustainability, I love the idea of a Morrisville Sustainability Committee, but even our task force that we have for the town, I think we, all these cities should be doing those kinds of task forces and doing more education to citizens, because a lot of times, you know, that's the thing I always have a hard time understanding, is like, for example, electric vehicles, you know, you hear all these big things about General Motors saying they're going to, you know, half their fleet's going to be electric. We only have 43,000 electric charging stations in the US. President wants to get a half a million. But why would I, you know, if I wanted, I would love to get an electric vehicle, I've actually been looking at buying one, but the reason I don't is because I don't know how, if I was driving on a trip, where am I going to get a charging station? So how is that behavior going to change for people to buy the electric vehicle, unless they just do a massive, like, even in Morrisville, we've made efforts, but we don't really have lots of charging stations, right? So that's a problem, I think, across the board, in terms of just taking gas vehicles off the roads.
That's a really good point, and I know a lot of cities and towns are grappling with the same thing, and I see fleets converting to hybrids now, instead of EVs, just in that kind of interim, until the infrastructure catches up, so that it's actually feasible to use electric vehicles.
Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Could we partner with Wake County to talk to them about reducing solid waste, reducing, like, I mean, taking, honestly, taking the, the single-use plastics out of a school would be a great start. Like, could we talk to them about, you know, their, maybe like, maybe they'd pilot a program in Morrisville, that would be cool, like a sustainability program for schools. And they could get the kids involved, and like, everybody could bring their own knife and fork, or they could, I don't know, they could like, supply them or whatever. But I mean, something where the kids would be involved in the program, like, and then they would learn things about sustainable practices that they would take home. And I mean, nothing is going to get you to recycle, like your kid going, are you going to recycle that? Are you going to recycle that? Are you going to recycle that? Until you just recycle it, before you lose your mind, you know? So that, I mean, you might kill two birds with one stone that way.
So I learned something really interesting today. I'm part of the Southeast Sustainability Directors Network, and I heard from Durham County, and they have put a moratorium on purchasing single-use plastic water for the whole county, which I thought was really amazing. So I plan to learn more about that program, and I will report that back to you all, because it's really interesting.
I mean, maybe, I don't know how much money we have, but if we, like, I mean, what if we just, in a pilot school, donated some water bottles, like, you know, some, like those, you know, that said Morrisville Sustainability Program on them, or something like that, and, you know, and then the kids could bring them to school, or they could leave them at school and just fill them up there, or whatever. But, you know, there go your single-use plastic water bottles, and they use like millions of those.
A lot of college campuses have gone, have started doing that, where they give out the bottles, and really encourage that, so...
And I think at the high school level, I think there's a lot, there would be a lot of engagement in a program like that, and you could even use high school students to go and talk to the younger students about it.
I love that. We probably only talk about the first one and the last question. Yep. So I'm going to move to this because of time. So how can Morrisville mitigate the effects of climate change for the top three? The top one that came up was to plant more trees to capture carbon. So I know that we've already spoke to this a little bit in terms of what we can do around our trees. So in the last couple of minutes that we have to go over this, any thoughts on?
Councilmember Garamela, please, followed by Councilmember Robati.
I wanted to circle back to the previous one for a second.
Okay.
Because we talk about education, but I was thinking back of my mind, you got to understand the demographics of Towne of Morrisville too, from where people come and their mind process, and how do we change that kind of a culture? Because that is the most important thing, not from Southeast Asia, like, you know, where it's not common that the recycling and all those things are done. So it's a cultural thing. Some people do it, some people just think, you know, it's not worth my time. So, so you had to bring programs that kind of goes into the culture of thinking and then, you know, help it move forward because almost 40% of the population is South Asian here. So that is something which is critical for the success of sustainability, to bring a change that they have never been used to. So that helps us in the long run, and including me, when I started, you know, getting the box, you know, I said, why, why do I have to pull two trash cans all the time? And then slowly, as Liz said, like, you know, recycling started adding up. It's, it's a change that needs to take effect. So it's all second generation, the first generation people are coming. Schools are more aware, but the parents and the first generation are not that, you know? So, so that kind of base level education is a critical thing that will help the town.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I've been talking about this since I was on the campaign trail, but Cary has a tree archive, and I would love it if there was some plot of, you know, a couple acres of just unusable land somewhere that we could take and start planting trees. And I remember I planted one, Donna planted one, and they, you, you paid, like, I think you paid like $150 or something like that, and you plant a native tree. And they, there was talk, I don't know how far they got with this, but there was talk of an app where you would walk up to the tree and you'd be able to like, buy your location. They would, there was an app that would tell you who planted it and why and stuff like that, and it was just really cool. And so I would love to see us doing something like that. You know, we could do it on like, we could do it on a couple acres of land if we buy a plot and we only use some of it or something like that. I'd love to explore that.
Councilmember Fender, please.
For this, this last question about how can Morrisville mitigate the effects of climate change, I don't think we, there's one thing that we can do except maybe the, the developing, I think, to me, the most important out of all of these is developing town policies or ordinances to support the mitigation efforts. And then through that, you're planting more trees or conserving trees or conserving water and promoting renewable energy. But I think we have to do all of these things to have an effect on climate change. It's like the Mayor Protem says with transportation, we're not going to build our way out of the transportation problems. We need, there's multiple, you know, options we need to consider. So when I was answering this, this was very hard for me to prioritize. But I, I think, you know, all of these initiatives are important.
Okay. We're just about out of time, and I really have to just say again, we really appreciate all of your candid comments and suggestions. I'm going to turn this back over to Kimberly to wrap up.
We could literally do this all day.
I know. This is a good problem that she has.
Thank you all for your patience. I'm sorry.
Before you wrap, can, there were some questions about the presentation itself.
Yes. Actually, I was just going to bump a couple slides forward, and then we'll get to the Q and A. I just wanted to talk to you about the next steps.
Thank you.
For the Master Sustainability Plan itself. What our plan is, we'd like to come back to council, if it's okay, with town administration and council, and report back in October and give you a more thorough assessment of Phase One. So we'll have all of those components done at that point, at least the, the Phase One components engagement might be still wrapping up, but I think we'll have lots to talk about in October. And then, of course, we have Phases Three and Four that we'll be working on in November and December. And so, yes, let's please go ahead and, and open it up to Q and A. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please, followed by myself.
So just a few questions. On the grant that you got from the Waste Reduction and Recycling, how much was that grant?
We were given $10,000. The town had to come up with cost share of $2,000 for that, that grant. And that was a Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Program.
Okay. And then on one of the slides, it talked about the conversion of lights to LED and the savings. It was $11,138 and then $6,000 for something. I didn't really understand from this slide, was that per year, all the buildings together? Or, yeah, what does that mean?
So these, I think this is just some of the LED conversions that we've done, and that would be in annual savings. I think we-
What is the two-by-four ceiling light?
I think that might be that the traditional fluorescents were changed out. And again, we'll give a lot more detail in the report, actually at the end of Phase One, and give you those quantified numbers.
And then still on this slide, fuel-efficient vehicles for staff. Does that mean hybrid or electric vehicle or just fuel-efficient?
I think what we're talking about there is hybrids predominantly. I'm not sure if we have fuel-efficient, okay, yes, it was just, just hybrids, which, as you know, we are cycling the, the traditional ICE vehicles out and bringing hybrids in.
And my last question is, what is the idling policy? What is that?
I don't know. I, I need to get back to you on that. It was mentioned by our police department as something relatively new, but I can certainly get back to you and let you know what that policy looks like.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just had a question slash suggestion about the survey itself. For question one, if we put like some examples for emissions reductions, environmental protection, so people have an idea of what we're talking about, because some might not know what that means. So wherever applicable, do that. And for question four-
Do you mean definitions, explaining what that, what we mean by that? Is that what you mean?
A definition or like an example of what emission reductions would be.
Great idea. Thank you.
So that's just a thought.
Perfect.
And then, we didn't touch question four at all. Do you want us to just email our laundry list?
Yes, so if you would like, please feel free, if you've written anything on your, your physical papers that you'd like to hand in to me, I would love to have that. So yes, please feel free to expand on any of the questions. Or if you feel like we've missed something in the survey, please do note that and get that back to us. I think we can give you a few days to do that. I, I don't think there's a huge rush, but if you can get that to me by the end of the week, that would be fabulous.
Okay. Any other, Councilmember Robati?
Going back to slide eight, I had a brief question on slide eight. Yeah, so could you explain to me, I don't, I guess I'm not really understanding this, this evaluation by homes. So can you explain to me like what the, what would the goal be? Like, if we're, if our annual water usage is equivalent to 130 homes for the town, what would the goal be for something like that? Again, how will you set that?
Right, so 130 homes is really an opportunity for us to, to use something representational that everyone understands, right? What does that, might we even come up with a water conservation goal? We don't know yet, right? Because we're not there. Typically, I think what municipalities do is they look for percentages, and Vicky, correct me if I'm wrong, but look for percentages or opportunities, numeric values to say, we would like to reduce our overall water consumption as a town by X number of gallons. Same with natural gas, same with electricity for that matter. Then, of course, we can look at carbon emissions as well.
And the only other thing was, I understand that you're going to come back in October, but I would love to get frequent updates on how you're doing, what programs have started, what, you know, that we can talk about in the community. That's, that kind of stuff is very helpful. So, you know, any update, any update that you can, whether it's in council news and notes or whatever, you know, I don't, I don't care much about the format, but it would be nice to get frequent updates on these, on these programs that you're going to be, that you're going to be doing.
Certainly. I'd be happy to. I've been submitting to news and notes biweekly to try to give you a snapshot of the different things that we're working on, but it certainly doesn't touch on all of the things.
Well, it seems like going forward, it's going to be more program-oriented because you're-
Yes.
So I'm just saying, like, I mean, I guess biweekly is fine if that's the cadence that you've settled on, but it would be great to get a program breakdown.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I'd like to thank you very much. Final thoughts, next steps?
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you all so much for participating in our, our collaboration. We really appreciate it.
As was noted, we could talk about this all day long. So thank you very much for your time. Vicky, thank you very much. Dr. Faust, we really appreciate it. Will we see you again in October too? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Conley.
Thank you all.
This time, we have, our next item is roundtable. We're going to take a 10-minute break in advance of that, so please reconvene at 7:34. I'm going to bring us back into order at this time. Going to, we are now at Town Council Roundtable. I'm going to pass it to Town Manager Page to facilitate the first part of this discussion.
Can you hear me okay? I tried to stay out of the bubble. Thank you. Sort of a two-part conversation to talk with council about tonight. The first is vaccine incentives, the second, our mask mandates. Last week on Wednesday, Wake County notified all of the Wake County managers that they would be issuing a release on a vaccine incentive policy, shared that information, and then we had a manager's call on Thursday to talk through that. Short story is, all the municipalities in Wake County, I think, are supportive of, if they did not already have something in place, putting in some incentives to increase vaccination rates for employees. I will tell you, we're all over the place in the types of incentives, the amounts of the incentives, who's involving the incentives, COVID testing and how that might occur, and putting, but putting programs in place. Some key takeaways that I will provide to you as we talk about how Morrisville might want to consider this is the municipalities that attempted to incite vaccination through just offering leave were not really very successful. They did not find that just leave was enough of an incentive for people either to get vaccinated or, interestingly, to provide a vaccine card if they had been vaccinated. As the incentives became monetary, that has increased some participation. As you wouldn't, as we know, rates of infection and vaccination rates are different across the county, so I think that does influence what some people are doing. We, we did get generalized data from Dr. Mishanga to share in our manager's call that was subsequently shared with mayor's, and it was substantially the same presentation that was provided at the Wake County Board of Commissioners meeting on Monday, primarily related to mask mandates that we'll come to. So we've gathered a whole bunch of information, and staff had a meeting yesterday to just sort of talk through what would be involved for Morrisville to offer that. I think some key points that I was in particular trying to determine is what would be a right amount. Again, they're small, 250, which is Wake County, and some other municipalities up to Cary is talking $1,000. Knightdale offered $1,000 gross, which means the cost to the town is about $1,600 per employee. So, so those are some factors. As we talk to them about what is driving people's decisions, it is, is, I think, making it worthwhile while managing it within potential budget considerations. There has been talk about whether ARPA money may be used for this. The, I'll say the jury is out. The federal guidance indicates there has to be increased vaccine success. If you don't have baselines, that's more difficult to approve. The School of Government has indicated they did not think it was legitimate expense for ARPA. More to be evaluated, and Wake County is sort of leading the effort of trying to get more information on that. But if we wanted to provide something, I think that our safest way would be to say this is going to be coming out of our general fund, and then if we could use ARPA money, that would be gravy. We do not and have not asked our employees if they are vaccinated. We have empirical information that we think there's been a relatively high rate of vaccine, but that is just what we think. It is not what we know. And just for some round numbers, we, we have 200 FTE slots. Let's say there's 200 full-time employees in our workforce. And then we have about 100, we, we sort of did a, a quick check and have asked in particular our parks and rec program, not only, but a lot of use of part-time workers who are also providing services. And a big part of my discussion is part-time workers versus full-time workers. But incentives being provided to part-time workers. And then the discussion has centered on whether it's the same amount of the incentive versus some prorata portion. And there's arguments that could be made on both sides of that. I mentioned Cary. It is, it is a benchmark for us because they're so close to us. Our employees and everyone, including ourselves here, often compare ourselves to Cary. There is some provisions in some guidance that incentives can't be coercive, and that's not defined. So is $1,000 too much or is it not too much? The, the $500 rate does appear to be a prominent one, and then some are offering options with some leave. Again, I don't think leave is enough of an incentive for us here in Morrisville. We were pretty good about giving our employees leave, so I just don't think it's an added incentive. And again, I have lots of information I can share that I'm, I'm not going to bog down this conversation, but we, we've run some generic scenarios. When I initially talked with the mayor about this on Friday, and he was prepping for the mayor's call and what the managers were told, I, I threw out $1,000 as similar to Cary. I, I've thought through that a little bit further, and one of the challenges is when you, when you add a, and many of you may know this, when you add a lump sum into somebody's paycheck, a lot of the value of that is gone because of the way the taxing works. And so an employee does not get $500 or $1,000, and that changes based on who the employee is. So if we want to give people a certain amount of money, we might want to consider grossing up so that people end up with the same amount, the incentive being the same for all. I, I've also thought a lot, and I think I was at prorata portions, but if the incentive is to get people vaccinated, doesn't matter whether you're a full-time or a part-time employee. So just scenario-wise, if we wanted to put $500 into everybody's pocket, again, this is rough estimates- is rough estimates, and assume all of that expense would be on our side, my estimate is that would cost us about $225,000.
Assuming no one is vaccinated.
We, the, thank you for a clarification. Everybody gets the incentive if you're vaccinated, whether you've already done that or not.
And can prove it, is that?
Yes, we would have to put in some procedures, and, and that's been a lot of our conversation, a cumbersome, but perhaps necessary and essential effort that primarily our human resources would do, and that's why we went ahead and had a meeting yesterday so that we could start thinking about all those things that we have to think about. There are 100 nuances to this program, and I will acknowledge that. I think then what I tell you is, now that I've given you perhaps a sticker shock, it's, if you give staff an authorization of an up-to amount and the authority to develop a program that works for us, we can move on from this conversation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Skroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thank you for sharing that information. If you could answer just a couple of questions, it'll help me.
Absolutely.
Understand. For the staff of the town of Mooresville, would that include both the full-time and the part-time staff?
Yes, we have a, and, and again, we're, we're, we're doing some estimates. We are going into a fall programming season, in particular for Parks and Rec, where we're adding staff. Now, one of the factors that we will put into our program is after a certain point, we won't hire you without a vaccine, vaccination card. So, and, and COVID testing for employees that choose not to get vaccinated every week, that's a, a process we would have to implement. Yes, it could go to disciplinary. You hope it doesn't, you, you hope we're accomplishing the carrot. A lot of talk about carrot and stick here, but all part-time. We talked about volunteers. We would, we would not incentivize volunteers, and they would have to leave the workplace if they are not vaccinated. We talked to Randy Little this morning to make sure he's got some time to work on what the potential impact on programming could be, and he's working on some data that I don't have to share so that we can continue to work through this. Hopefully, our strategy would be, with guidance from you tonight, we could start getting something in place to launch out to employees next week.
Fabulous. I know that one of the concerns with individuals receiving vaccine, especially Pfizer, Moderna, is the second dosage seems to be a little bit more rigorous on the immune response, and days off is really needed for some individuals. Would you be considering, like, hypothetically, a $500 incentive and maybe days off in addition to that, so that those that are concerned about a potential response, or even if they don't have a response, and they get, you know, a bonus day or something?
Part, or additional time is just another laborious burden of paperwork and inequitable across our range of employees. One of the nuances that some of the municipalities have done is, you remember, you approve things like emergency sick leave and things like that, allowing that for those types of purposes and for people that are vaccinated, and not allowing that for people that are not vaccinated.
Okay, I think I understand, is that if somebody has a situation where they are unable to return to work because of side effects, if you will, then that would be accommodated through talking with their manager and other means? Okay. And then the final question, which none of us can answer, is there's been talk of a potential booster, and would this policy at this time just include the initial dose, so that, you know, as we evolve through the year, there might be an option or even a mandate or recommendation to get a booster shot?
So, I was very fortunate to get to talk directly to Dr. Mishanga today and ask that very specific question about that booster dose, and she said, the guidance as of today is still, only if you are immunocompromised should you be worrying about a third booster. The, the other guidance that exists right now is that third booster is about eight months after your first shot. So, and, and we even talked about, there are people that probably have one of two vaccines, that you have to have two in order to be incentivized, or the one, if that's the shot that you got.
Jeannie.
But deferring a decision on booster shots until it's necessary. And if I may, because you've triggered me, and obviously, medical and religious exemptions get handled appropriately if those are the cases.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rabadi.
I have a two-part question. The first is, do Chief Andrews and Chief Grittl know the percentage of their employees that are vaccinated? And then, second part is, what are the, what do they think about offering incentives? Or have they given an opinion?
So, first answer is, I don't think either of them have exact counts. I think Chief Grittl would tell you that the firefighter percentage is probably at the 75 to 80 percent for first-line firefighters. Police, lower, probably 50 percent or less. Again, that's, that's guess when we talk. The second part of your question is, we have not talked to any staff directly about incentives yet, other than the core team that got together, which was mostly HR and, and Jeannie. Of course, our COVID, et cetera czar has been out of pocket. We will be pulling him back in and getting him up to speed to help us as of tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm just curious what their thoughts would be since they're first responders and...
If I can be cheeky a little bit, incentives are money, and that will appeal to those that have not been vaccinated.
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I think it's appalling that we've come to the place where we have to pay people to get vaccinated against a disease that can kill you, so I just want to get that out there. Having said that, what exactly are the appropriate handling measures for people with religious or medical, religious or medical exemptions for vaccines?
So, a little bit different for both. Medical, it is statements from doctors, some proof of whatever that medical condition is. And again, that's handled in a very confidential manner through our HR department. So, I wouldn't know, or anybody else wouldn't know if, if that was the case. And, and a reminder, just as we're doing tonight, we are wearing, all employees are wearing masks unless you are in your work area and no one else there. So, there's not a stigma to wearing a mask or not wearing a mask for any employee. And I don't think, just aside, I don't think we treat each other that way in our workforce, which is, which is a very... Religious is a little bit more nuanced, and, and the wording that's used is, is a demonstrated, established religious conviction that you would request and document with HR.
So, but I guess my question is, are religious and medical exemptions being documented with HR for the purpose of getting the incentive? Or are they just being documented as, I mean, if we're not going to give them the incentive, there's no sense to it?
They would, they would not get an incentive, they would also not have to be compelled to get a vaccination.
So...
And that's more if it were advanced to a disciplinary situation.
No, I don't think we should compel anybody to get a vaccination that has a religious objection or a medical situation, but I, I just, just help me here. So, then, so there's a person that just doesn't want to get the vaccine because they don't trust it, okay? There's a person that doesn't want to get the vaccine because of a religious or medical exemption. Those two things aren't the same, but those people still should be tested daily or weekly. I mean, so, there's going to be a pool of people that will come forward and say, I got it, here's the proof, and they all get $500, whatever, and, but then, like, why do we need to know whether there's a religious objection as a medical exemption, or just a, just a distrust of whatever?
So, I understand the question. I don't know that I have the best answer for you without talking to HR staff, and I'd be happy to get more clarification on that. We did talk a little bit about this. We don't have and don't expect to have a lot of medical and religious exemptions. That has not been the practice in the past, that we've seen that when other programs have been offered, that that might be the case.
Okay.
Although it's a, a difficult thing, I think, I think that vaccine, vaccinations are really important, so I think the town would benefit from making sure that as many of our employees are vaccinated as possible. Does anyone else have any more comments before we do a second round? Mayor Potem.
So, Martha, your ask tonight is to give you authority up to 225K to enact some kind of program to incentivize folks to get vaccinated. Is that...
So, at, at the risk of shooting myself in the foot, just because we're working with rough numbers, that we're still especially working with rec, I'd ask for 250, up to 250, so that we can provide you more defined estimates by the end of the week. And, and we will ultimately have to talk about the, the financial thing, is do you want to do a fund balance appropriation? I am saying that, that and formal action, I don't think is necessary in order to, for you to authorize to get the program started. If you wanted formal action, we could bring that really for the September meeting, but I don't think we want to wait till that to get the information out to our employees, especially if we're going to start testing. September 30th seems to be the, the, Wake County's talking September 15th, everyone else is talking September 30th, that if you have not presented proof of vaccination by September 30, we will start implementing the weekly COVID testing. The, September 30th is likely, many of the responses I got from the group I polled were, we're still working out the details, and that's kind of the boat we're in as well.
Okay. I think the only path out of what we're faced with right now is, is to get folks vaccinated, however we get them vaccinated. And while I don't, I don't, and I'm not thrilled that we have to pay people to get vaccinated, I think if it works, it works. And at this point, I, I would truly like my life back. I would, I would like to get back to normal. I'd like to get there as quick as we can, and the quickest way we're going to get there for all of us is to make sure as many people as possible are vaccinated, so...
And if I could add on to you, because the next question may be, let's offer this to the community, not allowed. Can't, can't just give it out to the community. It's not, it's not an authorized use of any money, ours or ARPA.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's, you know, the state's already taking care of that. They're already offering, of course, it's, you know, $100, but they're, they're already offering incentives, financial incentives to folks to get vaccinated.
Some locations, yep. Okay, all set. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Garamella, then Councilmember Skroggins-Johnson.
It was me from a long time, so I would appreciate it.
I think you went first on this subject, so I'm making sure that Steve gets his chance.
He was on a train.
Okay, fine.
Martha, I'm having a very hard time. Why should I pay $225,000 for people, like, you're saying to pay everyone in spite of their vaccination?
So, the premise behind that is why penalize the people that did that proactively by only incentivizing people from a certain point in time? That's the premise behind that.
I mean to say, that's not like, you know, the federal government not going and giving $100 to everyone who got a vaccine either, right? Its idea is to get to that higher target number, but I have a hard time paying people who are already vaccinated, you know, that, and that to, like, $500, $1,000, it's kind of ridiculous to me, you know, like, and I'm, but then, this is something that is, should be done to protect ourselves and the people around it, and especially when you're talking about the police is only 50 percent. I'm having a hard time. I would not even talk to a police person close by because I don't know, like, he, he is having or not, you know? So, so that kind of a thing bothers me a lot. I'll be very upfront. And also, the other thing I have is vendors, because I was talking to my landscapers. Those guys were big no-no for vaccines. Now, they work in NetApp and IBM. IBM has said, all their vendors, if they're not vaccinated, they can't come onto their premise. And their mask, they usually use a kind of a hoodie thing. They said they will not even accept that, like, they're completely changing their mask guidelines of how they had to wear a mask. So, because I'm worried about, the deltsavarian is for the kids, the volunteer soccer coaches, if they are not vaccinated, they are basically giving it to all the kids there. So, that's the thing, like, how can we ensure that, they might be a volunteer, but they are, if, if he's the guy and, and a lot of kids got it, then you're, it's, looks bad for the town, that they went to the soccer or they went to the baseball, and all this gets caught, got it. So, how can we ensure that is taken care of? I'd rather give them, the volunteers who are not vaccinated, than the people who are already vaccinated, just give them, like, just because, thank you for what you did.
So, if I could take your second part first, is we are, we, we would not propose a plan where volunteers or contracted workers, so we have a lot of those, that they come in and provide services, in particular in Parks and Rec, we would implement a, you can't do that unless you show us proof of vaccination. And that's why I mentioned, we have to make sure Randy has the time to assess the impact on programs if a volunteer or a contracted worker would not provide that. We are putting something in place that says, you can't provide the services to the town unless you show us this proof. We just wouldn't incentivize that.
Yeah, no, that is fine, like, the new vendors and everything who are coming, H-WAC guy, you know, until those are vaccinated, as part of their W2s and whatever you take, you know, don't even have business with them. But giving the people who are vaccinated $500, it's against my ethics. I would not support that.
And I understand your perspective. It, I, it would be a disincentive to not give the same amount of incentive to everybody that is vaccinated in the workplace if that is the intended purpose. And that is repeatedly what people, is, is the goal is to get people vaccinated, and I'll, I'll, and these are my words, so we're going to do what we have to do to make that, to demonstrate that for our own workplace. I, I understand how you feel.
Yeah, that's, that's my...
And no one is proposing only for new vaccines.
You're saying no one is? And why are we given special preference where the federal is giving 100? Why we the 1,000 for us?
So, I'm not recommending 1,000. I'm recommending 500 gross, which roughly costs us about $750 per person, 770, 760, when you figure out the taxes, et cetera, that would, would affect that number.
So, how about we basically buy them a gift card, then?
Not allowed to buy gift cards.
No, okay. Okay. Well, that's my thing, you know, for me, I have a hard time paying, but that's just, I'll go with whatever the council wants. But that's just, I'll go with whatever the council wants.
That's why we're here, to share our ideas and our perspectives. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Skergens Johnson, please.
One thing I'm hearing in the public is that, you know, in addition to vaccine and for masks, is that, you know, with, with the vaccines, I think there's some people that are, are very confused about, well, you know, how can I get the, if I'm already vaccinated, you know, I can get the Delta variant, so, you know, I don't want to get vaccinated because I'm safe. So I think it's important for us to educate the public, or just our own staff, that, that if you're not vaccinated, you have a greater chance of dying from the Delta variant or being hospitalized. And that's something I think that's very confusing, because we're hearing so much messaging from the federal government, the state, and then there's just so much confusion out there. And I think that's what would make it easy for us to just, you know, have the data and science that shows that, you know, why we want people to be vaccinated.
So the mayor shared the Wake County PowerPoint, the recent PowerPoint presentation, and there is some very specific information about the, the Delta variant when you're vaccinated versus non-vaccinated. And we will continue to share that information to inform and educate our public as, as best we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Ralph. Councilmember Skergens Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to return to practical matters such as funding for this program. I understand Councilmember Garamella's apprehension about paying money for people that have already done the right thing, right? But in the same sense, I think we need to be fair, because I sense that we're going to need that booster for not just those that are immune or compromised. It's possible that the general population could need that booster as well. So what we do now is setting a precedent for what's going to happen in the future. And we want people to be healthy and safe. So paying for this program would, at this time, because you don't know about the ARPA money, it would be out of our general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then?
We, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So talked about just some of the dynamics of how our budget works. And just, just a quick example, and Jeannie will tell you, we've, we've closed and closed and closed our margin. And as we put other things in place to keep our positions filled. But the reality is, we approved 13 positions, and they're not filled July 1. So you automatically start developing that unexpendated salary from the first day of fiscal year. And, and it, it could be used for these types of purposes. Again, we have really narrowed our margin, and our goal is a 100% you know, fill rate. So it's not like we have lots of money to throw out there. But it is also why I'm saying, we're going to get a fund balance report, we're going to get an audit report, we're going to know what we have to work with, you're going to know the other things we're talking about using general fund. We'll have some more definitive answers on how we can use the ARPA money. We'll know how much it costs, that, that we would be able to recommend to you the way to pay for it better.
Right, but you know today that you could use general fund until you have better clarity on the other sources, and then that could be adjusted appropriately. Then the, the other question I have is, for those that are not vaccinated, and when you do institute the policy for testing, periodic testing, whether it's weekly or whatever cycle, how is that going to be paid? Is the town paying for the testing? Is the federal government paying for testing? Is the county paying for testing? How is testing covered in this situation?
All Wake County testing is free. So we will, we will, we will require people to go to a Wake County testing site. And if you go out to their website, they have their normal centers and then a list of where there are testing sites that are going through the Wake County. So there should be no cost to the, the testing. We will pay for, since we're requiring the COVID test, they will do that on company time. So it's really part of their work hours, is, is how that would generally work. Could be an outlier type of an example, but for the most part, it would be during work hours.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more comments, so I guess we can just, you think a raise of hands or head nods to move forward? What do you, what do you need to see from us? Just head nods?
Like hands.
Okay.
Everybody, then everybody sees everybody.
Right, right.
Okay, so if, to give town manager and staff authorization to spend up to $250,000 to implement this vaccine program, please raise your hand at this time. Okay, so you have what you need?
I'm, I'm okay for the people to do, for like someone to just give a bonus, you know? I'd rather give them a bonus than this. But I'm going to say, yeah, it is, but that's, I feel very strong, we should not be doing it.
So you have consensus to move forward with that program. Thank you very much for do, all the work that you've already done, and the work that you will do to try to make all of our townspeople safe through our staff being vaccinated as possible.
And I, I will say, as we start, we'll, we'll be collecting data for the first time, that we'll, we'll be able to sort of revalidate who's been vaccinated based on the information they provide us. It, it'll just give us some baselines for our employees. Morrisville is just in general low COVID incident and higher vaccination rate, just as a community. I don't have specifics, but that's the information the data shows for our census tract.
Yep, from what I can see, you've done a really good job trying to find the balance between respecting employees' privacy and trying to provide a safe environment for everyone, so thank you very much for that.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. At Cisco, we had, we didn't get a bonus, but we, there was a, there was a little survey that you could go in and fill out in the, in the HR system to indicate that you were vaccinated, because they're only letting vaccinated people come back to the office. Like, you could still work there, but you have to work from home. So there was just a checkbox in the HR system, and if you wanted to, you could upload a copy of your vaccination report. That might be a way to, you know, to deal with some of the paperwork.
Thank you.
Yeah, and G, yes, GSK, we do like, the badge reader, badge readers will not be activated if those cards are not
Wow.
Done, so pretty much, if they don't give it, you know, your badge readers.
Oh, really?
Okay.
What company was this?
GSK.
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 Okay. So I believe there's a sort of second half of this COVID discussion?
Yeah, so at the end of our manager's conversation, County Manager Ellis sort of threw out, we're talking about a mask mandate, what you think. And, and from the start of that discussion, there was division amongst municipalities on whether they would support a mask mandate. And that's playing out at, at this point in time. Apex, Fuquay Varina, Holly Springs, and Wake Forest have all indicated they would not provide, or they would not put a mask mandate in place. And this really, in some ways relates to signing on to a Wake County amendment to the statement of emergency declaration. In all four of those cases, they cited two reasons why they would not want to propose a mask mandate for the community. That is, they think the state should be taking the lead in providing direction, and the lack of enforceability of a mandate and putting something in place that's not being enforced. So all of them were consistent in the reason why they are not providing that mandate. As you know from the news, Durham has put one in, Raleigh has put one in, Cary announced one yesterday that is going into effect tomorrow. And we have received a draft copy, Jeannie, would you mind? Of the Wake County draft declaration today. If Morrisville wanted to talk about signing on to that declaration. The only municipality that I am, I'll say 100% certain, has already committed to signing on to this is Knightdale. And I don't have full information about all the municipalities.
So we would be signing on to the declaration rather than having our own?
I think that's the discussion that council is, is going to have.
So to, to clarify, Mayor, Martha, the, both Raleigh and Cary did their own declaration. They did not sign on to Wake County.
And for consistency, it's unlikely that they would, because then they'd have to go back and rechange theirs to match this draft. So they're doing their thing separately, but I think a lot of this matches what they're doing.
So Martha, can I ask you a couple of questions? So what kind of data do we have that relates to the town of Morrisville? I, I've seen the data, and I watched the Wake County Board of Commissioners meeting yesterday where Dr. Mashanga presented. And I have that presentation, and I've followed those charts. She talked a lot about, in general, for Wake County. So it would be really helpful to know what, what the statistics are for us. And I know she said during her presentation that she was going to try to get that information out to all the municipalities. So my assumption is, there were probably several of us asking that question. And, and I say all that because I've also, and I don't, I don't believe she said this, I believe I read this, that, and that's why information is really important, and data is really important. That of the, all of the COVID cases that are occurring right now in Wake County, half of them are in the city of Raleigh. I don't know where in Raleigh, but they're in Raleigh. So it would be really helpful to know where the other 50% are. And if you look at some of the maps that she presented in her presentation yesterday, it looks like a lot of it is out over in the eastern part of the county. So anyhow, what information do we have as it relates to, to the town of Morrisville and, you know, over on this side of the county?
So, so I'll, I'll, and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't totally know what to be prepared for, so I may have to pass some things around. So this is the information that Dr. Mashanga shared with me today, because I've asked this specific question. And it is a refrain that, that, that the managers are, what are our statistics? So how, how does this mean to us? And so she provided me two, two pages. One is a case rates for Census Trac. So even that is not fully defined as just Morrisville. And, and, and then a vaccination, vaccination coverage by Census Trac. And I mentioned this a little bit, she went, oh, you're pretty good on vaccination. That was sort of her response to me. And our infection rate of COVID is at that lower end. Is that data? No, I don't have that data. It's colored maps, so I can show you that. The other one that we have from the August 16th presentation to the Wake County Board of Commissioners, this is a picture of Wake County. The darker the color, the more incident of COVID spread. We are definitely in the lighter color. And I'm happy to just allow you to look at these. I'm sorry, I don't have copies for everybody. But data, I, I don't have more data than that.
Have more follow-up at this point, or should I have some other questions?
That's all I have right now. I, I think that information would be really helpful in this conversation, quite frankly.
And I do agree that I, I think Dr. Mashanga is, is trying to provide more information.
I know.
Or, or, or the staff. I just don't have any more than that for this conversation tonight.
Councilmember Skergens Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
The data is very helpful to me as well. That was one of my questions, but I do have another question. We received several emails, both in support of a mask mandate and some that asked for an exception. And one of the emails that we received was about games or formal events, such as events occurring at the Wake Competition Center. And one thing I did read in the Wake County draft was that there are exceptions to wearing masks, such as item number six, giving a speech, performance, or broadcast to an audience, where they maintain a distance of at least 10 feet from the audience. And as we think about the Wake Competition Center, although it says you have to wear a mask if you're in a gym or a fitness center, could it be interpreted that a game, a formal game is actually a performance, where there is an audience? And that audience, you know, and, and Anne's going to weigh in in just a minute. But I just, you know, the, the language is not, is a little, could be interpreted in a certain way. And the other masks are not required with swimming, obviously, because a lot of masks are of some sort of fabric or fiber that would impede its performance. So I just needed some interpretation on that.
And, and I'll go first. The mayor's had several mayor's conversations that, that I haven't participated in. If, if it would be helpful to council, I can go over the emails we've received. We've received five, so it was manageable. Two were just supporting a mask mandate and, and related to healthcare industry or young children not being vaccinated. One was really just a, is an announcement coming. We had one from a restaurant in Morrisville that just says, say something so that we can be clear. And then, yes, the last one was Mr. Ammons, who is really talking about people are in, I'll call it physical activities versus.
Not the formal games, okay.
If you remember way back when, this was one of the real issues when, when the first declaration was being put together. All of the exceptions, people wanted for different things, and this was one of them. People in physical activities, et cetera. I would not read this Wake County declaration as providing that exception. I don't know, I think they want an answer if Morrisville is going to sign on to this fairly quickly. And by that, I mean tomorrow. So I don't know if there's opportunity to ask for adjustments or interpretations or revision. I don't have that information. Happy to ask. I don't know if the mayor has any information.
So my understanding is that always happy to hear revisions, but given the timeline, there wouldn't be a whole lot of back and forth. So it'd probably be more of an interpretation later, rather than a revision to this actual document. But I think that they're always looking to make things better, so that would be, I think that'd be handled.
And if I could just add, we would get inundated with gyms and, and fitness facilities. They were actually some of the, the most vocal the first time around about looking for those exceptions during physical activity. So it wouldn't just be Wake Competition Center. That would affect.
Right, and I wasn't talking about practice. I was talking about a formal game, you know, where there's an audience. That's, that's how I was looking at that item, is like, you know, that kind of venue.
Anything else, Councilmember Skergens Johnson?
Nope.
Okay, Councilmember Robati, please.
Just under where Councilmember Skergens Johnson was referring to, item 2D, that provides an exception for worship, religious and spiritual gatherings, funeral ceremonies, and wedding ceremonies are exempt from the requirements of section two. I mean, I feel about that pretty much the way that I feel about the spectators at a sporting event, which is, those events are super sponsors. I mean, if we're, if we're serious about this, I think we'd need to strike out section D and not sign on to the Wake County one, but do our own, our own ordinance without that section. I mean, that's, like, one wedding could basically, like, infect the whole town.
That would be one thing to address. We could do an addendum to it. Saying that the. We could do an addendum to it, saying that that exception is not an exception, if we chose to do that.
I mean, I'd be interested in what everybody else thinks. Does anybody think that's a good idea?
I would generally like to stay with Wake County. There are the health experts. And although those, some religious ceremonies have been super spreaders in the past, hopefully people have learned, and that people are generally going to be responsible and not have that happen this time around. But I'd love to hear from other people, too. So, would anyone like to speak on that one in particular?
So I'll jump in. I think this whole thing, that, this whole issue that we're dealing with right here, right now, is very uncomfortable for me. There are different towns that have different proclamations and different exemptions for masks. Then you've got, because that would be Raleigh and Cary. Then you've got Wake County doing their thing. I think this is going to be so confusing. And as much as I would suggest that we have our own here in the town of Morrisville, based on our own numbers and our own criteria and how we as a community are doing, I think that it's just making it more confusing. I think Martha made a comment earlier about how, when, I think you said, when the managers all talked, you talked about how it would be, enforcement's going to be an issue, and that statewide would be a better solution. I think the less confusing we can make this for the public, the better. I'm not sure we're going to accomplish that, quite frankly. And that's where my angst comes into play. And to the comment about, you know, people are smart enough to know whether they're going to a super spreader event or not, and they'll take precautions accordingly or not, I would tell you that goes to this whole thing we're talking about. I think there are people out there that know now that masks help, and that, I wear a mask all the time now. I go to the grocery store and I wear a mask, and I don't have to. And I'm gonna say something, and I don't mean this, take this with all due respect, and I'm not, I don't mean this, I know it's not gonna come out right, so I'm just gonna blurt it. But we have a mask mandate here in the town facilities. We are supposed to all be wearing masks in town facilities. Within the first hour of us meeting here tonight, the majority of this council did not adhere to that. So that makes me really uncomfortable, to be a part of a group that's gonna mandate to the public that they have to wear masks when we can't adhere to it ourselves right here and right now. And I, again, I take that with all the respect. And I say that because the public's watching. And Martha talked about a couple of people that emailed us. I've received emails and phone calls from folks on the other side, saying, "If you're gonna do this, we really want to know why you're doing it, and we really want to have the data associated with why you're doing this, and the criteria about why you're doing this." I mean, and I think those are all really valid questions, and they're watching tonight. And I don't know what we're saying to them.
Well, I think, though, that we have a responsibility to, like the restaurant that reached out, people are very divided on this issue in town. So I think we.
I'm sorry.
I think we have a responsibility to help businesses by saying something, one way or the other, either. And if we don't say yes, then we're saying no.
And I'm not saying say no, please understand, I'm not saying say no. I'm just saying, just, look at, look at what you're presenting right now to the public, that you can't even need to hear to our own mask mandate here right now.
I'm presenting myself in a personal workspace protected by Plexiglas. When I got up to do the things, I put my mask back on.
That's not what our, that's not what our town mask mandate says.
Okay, that's my bad, then. Let me put that back on.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we shouldn't have a mask mandate. I'm not, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I am, I am, I am just providing information that I'm concerned about. That, I know we all are concerned, and you all have your own opinions, and that's what we're here for. I'm just expressing my angst over this issue right now. I wish it was more across the board. I wish we were all more in sync, and I mean that as a community at large, not just town. And we're not.
Thank you. And we're here to share our opinions and our perspectives, that's why we're here. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
What's our objective tonight? What are we trying to do? Because I, I just want to know, what are we, kind of provide guidance of whether we want to have a mask mandate or not? Or are we gonna do this?
I'd imagine this discussion is to build consensus around the idea of supporting a mask mandate in alignment with Wake County.
Okay. I think, first of all, that, first of all, one of the reasons, when I take my mask off, I just have a real hard time speaking with a mask. And so it's hard to, for me, in a meeting, to wear a mask. And it gets so frustrating that sometimes I wish that I could just do the meetings virtually, so that way I wouldn't be having to take my mask off when I talk to the public. But with that being said, I'm in favor of aligning with the Wake County, you know, in terms of just signing on to it. I just want, you know, I'm hearing from people that are in favor of it. I've heard from a number of people, particularly some people I see in the morning at M A F C that are seniors, that are frustrated about wearing masks in the gym when they work out. And they've come to me and said, you know, but they've all come and said, you know, "We want Morrisville to make a decision. Do you want to have masks, or do you not want to have masks?" And so, I think as long as we can tell the public that we're signing on to this ordinance, and the Wake County ordinance, and that they know that they should wear a mask. The question, the concern I have is the enforcement. And is it, is it better just to have our own mask mandate? Because I think there's just so much confusion, because if you have a county and then you have a town, you know, I mean, I just don't understand why the governor can't just say it's statewide. You know, we're having all these ordinances, county and city, and everyone's getting confused. So whatever you all think is the best, I mean, I.
That's the idea of the county umbrella. And in the past, all 12 signed on, so that was like the state doing it for the county. If the state did it for all of us, that would be great. If the county did it for all of us, that would be great. If we did it for all the restaurants and the businesses to give them cover and understanding. So it's a matter of levels, and the governor is not at this time willing to do it. Wake County is. So it's a matter of whether or not we want to be part of that umbrella.
So that's what, so you're in favor of just signing on to the ordinance as the other mayors have done?
I was looking to hear from everybody, but yes, I'm in favor.
Why would Cary do their, I'm just curious, why Cary would do their own and not sign on to Wake County? Why would they do that?
It's my understanding they didn't want to wait till Friday. We got a copy of his declaration, and it was all about the urgency, and how he's had conversations with hospital administration, and how they really need their people's help now. They need decisions to be made as quickly as possible. And he felt that Wake County, because of 12, and trying to get all 12 on board, is taking a little longer. And it took a little longer last time, too. But it was being done in advance of Durham and Orange and other places. So there is time to have those discussions without pressure from outside forces. This has been a unique situation in that some other counties have gotten ahead of us. So, that's why it's a little fractured, frankly. And so we're trying to come together around what our health experts, we pay our taxes to get this information from Dr. Mashanga. And they're telling us that this is an important thing to do at this time. But it has become somewhat political, and people are trying to make sure that everything's done in the right way. So that's why we're having this discussion tonight, so.
Yeah, and the last thing I'll say is, it's become political, because the argument against it, and I've debated this with members of the public and even some family members, is, you know, "Well, why do I want to wear a mask? You know, because I have my individual freedom." And my comeback to that is, I don't want to wear a seatbelt when I get, when I drive my car. I don't want to get my car inspected. But the law requires me to do it because it keeps people safe. I'm not allowed to go on an airplane with a gun or a weapon when I go through security, because it's a threat. And so the COVID disease is a weapon inside of us that can infect or kill somebody. And that's where, I mean, I'm just saying that for the public watching. That's why I think it's important. So, I don't, I, if you're out there, there are people out there who say, "Well, I don't want a mask, you're taking away my freedom." I just, I just don't, I understand. But there's a lot of things we do in this country that we don't want to do, but the law requires us to do. I don't want to drive without a license. I left my license at home. Well, you can't drive in the road without a license. You get pulled over for driving a license, you get.
Thank you. So we have two more people to hear from the first time, and then we'll circle back again. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
No, I think, Liz, you bring a good point, you know. And for me, I took medication, and then it basically nauseates me. And either I can leave or basically continue. That's pretty much my state, and that's the reason I'm having a hard time not able to wear a mask. But coming to this, I support going with the Wake County stuff, because we're pretty much in a donate area, because we're surrounded by RTP. We're surrounded by Durham, which already has it. RTP will come under Wake County unincorporated. Cary has already done it. So, for us, you know, being in the donate doesn't make sense. If we were the only one doing it and Cary was not doing it, then for me, it's okay, like, you know, we may be losing businesses to that. And then I totally understand why NC, like, you know, Raleigh did it and Cary did it. The article came last week, a couple of days ago. NC State opened up, only 50% of NC State is vaccinated. And that's a big problem for them. So Raleigh had to quickly do it. They have huge universities to do it. You know, Cary, you know, last Wednesday, I was in the ER, you know, with my pain, and it was full. I had to literally wait two hours outside to even get someone to do it. And so obviously, their hospitals and everything are doing, so it makes total sense for me. I think it always comes back to, you know, these are just resolutions with no enforcement, and that has happened in the past, too. You know, I don't know, like, how many cases, Martha, did we get in the past? Like, where we had this mask mandate, and people really complained, you know? Like, I was surprised, I went last week to Walmart, and a person in front of me, I didn't wear a mask, and then she said, "Hey, can you wear a mask?" And she gave me a mask getting into Walmart. My son, yesterday, went to, quick trip to get a drink. They basically said, "Go get a mask and then come inside." So many of the stores are already mandating it, you know, like, kind of, not mandating, I would say, like, you know, encouraging it and enforcing it at the door itself. So, and we have a very high rate. And I don't think enforcement would be a big issue, or people will come and say, because Martha is correct, and we don't have enforcement in the right way. So, it's more as, like, more the enforcement is doing the right thing. And pretty much, if they get a call, we don't have any enforcement, that's pretty much what we are signing off to along with it. It's not just like, you know, we are mandating with no enforcement, is what I see it.
And if I may, that's the discussion we did have at the staff level, in particular, police, because they will be, if a mandate's in place, people expect enforcement. And we were, we were successful with education efforts. But if there's complaints, people expect something to be done. So when you're talking about giving clear messages, that just has, that's not a clear message, is, we're putting something in place, but we won't enforce it. And you've mentioned Walmart. There are other stores in Morrisville that, without a state directive, and they're in multiple locations, they may choose not to enforce it in their store. And that would be something that staff could be charged with having to navigate.
Anything else, Councilmember Garamella?
That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Fender, please.
I'm in favor of signing on to the Wake County's ordinance. I, to Councilmember Garamella's point, we're surrounded by Durham County and Cary. And so I think it makes sense. I don't know what the issue is with Apex and Holly Springs and Fuquay, of why they are lagging behind. But, I mean, just in the past week, I've read about a 16-year-old that died of COVID, and a 17-year-old that's died of COVID recently. And our kids are getting ready to go back to school. My son is already back in school. And there's a lot of parents that are concerned and worried out there. I don't particularly like wearing this mask. I was, you know, all excited not having to wear the mask, being vaccinated myself, but this is the reason why we find ourselves here. So, I think we need to do something to get Stan.
Thank you. We're gonna have a second round now, as everyone's weighed in. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, anyone who wishes?
So, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have a copy of the Cary declaration alongside the Wake County, because there are some material differences. I just pulled it up on my computer.
I have a copy, and we could make copies very quickly, if that's helpful.
Well, let me just share a few of the differences. Well, you know, we share so many boundaries with Cary. And so, I would lean towards being more consistent with Cary, and I'm gonna read a few of these differences, if it makes it easier for people to comply. Unless you feel like the Wake County is better in, there's some things that are added, and there's some things that are taken out, right? So, Wake County adds, or Wake County is very restrictive, saying a mask is required with any child that is two years or older, versus Cary is under five years of age. So Cary's a little more lenient, does not have the two years or under, kind of, or two years or older mandate. Cary wants the audience to be 20 feet from whatever activity versus 10 feet in Wake County. Wake County added, swimming doesn't require a mask. It's not specified in Cary. I'm not sure if I saw the worship, religious, and spiritual gatherings.
It was in there, too.
It is in there.
Yes, they had it in there, too.
Very good. Again, I just did this really quick. But it's just, it'd be nice to know the differences so that we could make a decision about whether we wanted to be consistent with our neighbors to help our Western Wake residents and businesses, or if we wanted to go with Wake County. And there's a good case to go with Wake County because of consistency across the county, but there would be some confusion about some of these differences.
That's a very valid point. When I spoke to Chair Calabria a couple of days ago, I did mention to take a look at Cary and Raleigh. So they did intentionally look at what those two municipalities also did. And they, I guess, with the health experts, they made their determination of what was best. So I would venture to say that if Cary was, hadn't already done it, they'd be okay with Wakes, and it's different just for a couple of different reasons. And they're basing it on the information they had at hand. I would say that, I would put more trust in Wake County's assessment of what's best from a health perspective, as they have a health department. So not to say anything bad about what Cary's done, which is great, and taking a lead is important. But that's, that would be where I would, I'd stay with Wake instead of doing the Cary, although, being right next to Cary, I do understand your perspective.
I don't completely think that one is more right than the other. I think that we need to think about compliance and, you know, are the differences material enough to cause that confusion? Because just along this town hall drive that we're sitting at now, there's a section that is Cary, and there's a section that is Morrisville. And technically, as you drive along, you have to mask up if you're, you know, three years old versus. versus if you're, you know, in Wake County in general. So, it's just, that's really my point, is not somebody's smarter or better than the other, it's just what is best for the community here in this region.
Okay. Councilmember Robody, followed by Councilmember Garamella, and then Mayor Proton.
I think that Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson has a great point. I'm just thinking of that stretch of Davis Drive, where Wegmans is in Cary, and then Grace Park is in Morrisville, but then I'm pretty sure, like, business is down that way. Cary, Morrisville, Cary, Morrisville. So, I, I mean, I think it's, I think that the, the only thing that concerns me in the Cary policy is the under-five years of age. I don't, you know, some, some of those five-year-olds are gonna be in school, and I'm, that concerns me. That concerns me. That's all I have to say. That's, that's the only thing where I would say that I would be more comfortable with, I mean, since they both have the weddings and funerals thing in there, I'd be more comfortable with the Wake County thing, only because I think it's closer to CDC guidelines. So, that's, you know, that would be my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Mayor Proton.
I, I think instead of going more details, you know, we can cherry pick it as to have some kind of a mandate. That's all we're looking at. We know there's no enforcement. You know, no one is going behind a kid who is two years or five years, saying you should be wearing a mask, or you're not, you're 10 feet or 20 feet. I think nothing of that, you know, even if the police is called, nothing is going to happen, other than education. It, it is a symbol of, and, and awareness and education by doing these things. Because I, I really don't think police will be enforcing any of these. So, as quickly as we can, let's sign up, and next topic that we can go to.
Okay. Mayor Proton-Johnson?
So, you, you just made me rethink what I was just gonna say, Satish, because I, I talked to, both TJ and Martha know that this afternoon, I said I would lean more toward aligning with Cary, because our borders are so intertwined, and, you know, half the time, people think Wegmans is in Morrisville, when it's really in Cary, and so, it would make more sense to align, align with them and, and what their exemptions are. But you make a really good point. If nobody's gonna enforce anything, then I guess.
So, why does it matter?
So, let me ask you something about that, Martha, about enforcement. Last year, when we went through this, when, of course, it was statewide mask mandate that went into effect last summer, how, 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 how much was our police department pulled into enforcement and people calling and asking for help? Was, was it, and I, you don't have to give numbers, was it overwhelming? Give us some feel for how that went last summer.
I don't know that it was overwhelming. I, I would say that it was heavier at the front end, and of course, the police, if a call comes in, the police has to respond. And, but they were successful at focusing on the education. So, but it is time, it is effort, it would be, it would need to be complicated or complemented with our messaging. So, so there, there is that awareness. But if a call comes, they have to respond to it. And so, so the messaging, you know, and that's in the Wake County, that is not in the Cary, and that concerns me about the Cary one, putting some enforcement compliance responsibility on. That, that would concern me. I, I know from Chief Andrews, she's, she's got concerns about enforcement, always would. Same conversation when this came around the last time.
They have a whole paragraph related to that. You're right about that.
But, but they were successful at doing that. And again, we had a, we have a community that, I'll, I'll say, was supportive and compliant with the requests that were being made.
Okay. Councilmember Robody, did you want to weigh in again?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, um, what I think I'm hearing is that we do have consensus that masks matter, and that we'd like to align with the Wake County mask mandate. So, we can go ahead and give that direction to town manager to let the county know that fact? Unless you have some new information you're getting off right now.
Chief An, I'm, I'm sorry, Chief Andrews, indicate, we enforced, they enforced trespassing calls, if that was what the call was. So, if somebody was, if a business or something was enforcing, and somebody did not comply, that was a trespassing call to them. I'm just looking to see if she's saying anything else. So, she, she, you know, we do have an integrated 9/11 system, 911 system, she said. So, that's another nuance, but irrespective of the Cary resolution, I, I don't know what the workload will be on that ability to enforce as well. So, it, it still really is education and awareness.
Yeah, so the, the big picture is, you go out the door, you're going into a building other than your home, you're gonna be wearing a mask. And it's not about the little fine details and how we're different by a few feet or by a couple of years. It's how important it is to wear a mask to try to protect the entire community. And we're hoping as more people get vaccinated, this will become moot, because vaccination is the most important thing, and this is the second most important thing, but is very vital. It's like the three W's. You can't just do two of them, you have to do all three. So, vaccination is really key. We're gonna keep on trying to make that happen for as many people who are willing. And then also, this mask mandate will hopefully reduce this Delta variant spread. So, thank you very much. This is a really good discussion tonight. I think our residents and our businesses appreciate the thoughtful nature of this discussion, and how we're trying to protect everyone's health and safety. So, you'll let the county know that we are signing on to the Wake County?
And, yeah, did I miss a head nod or consensus?
Yeah.
Or using a hand? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did that while you were communicating with Chief Andrews, so I apologize. But yes, we have consensus to move forward with the Wake County mask mandate.
We didn't do a head nod or a hand wave.
I counted all the.
No, 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 we didn't do a head nod or a hand wave.
Okay. If you're in favor of aligning with the Wake County mask mandate, please raise your hand at this time.
Thank you. I, I think it's important that we do these with our hands.
I appreciate the consensus that this council came to, so thank you all very much. Thank you, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Page. At this time, we have a roundtable. Are we interested, or we'd like to postpone that for some other time?
Some other time.
I just, I don't have, like, a roundtable. I just have a question about schedule.
Sure.
Okay. Town Manager Page, I was putting together a schedule for the next couple of months, just, you know, 'cause I was looking ahead. And there are some pretty exciting things going on, on Saturdays for our town, specifically, like, October 2nd, we have the Smart Shuttle launching, we've got Fire Safety Day, we've got quite a lot of fun things happening in the next couple of months. And I was aware that you are actively planning a police academy for the council, and that is three consecutive weeks, one of which falls on October 2nd. And I was wondering if there's any flexibility, or, you know. I, I was just trying to see if we really did have to have them all three consecutive weeks, or if there's any adjustments that could be made, perhaps.
I looked at scheduling with Chief Andrews, who worked with her staff. We split it up into three weekends. I will acknowledge, I think that that was our, hers, and mine in working with the staff proposal. We didn't think that you would appreciate an all-day. So, in light of the fact that there are other activities, and, and when we talked about this initially, we knew that some of you would be in a campaigning period of time. And we also tried to stay away from the back end of October for those purposes. I am happy to talk with her if you want to give me some additional guidance on, on how you might structure it. There, the, you, I, I'll, I'll just say this, is, is there's content in each of those. It, it doesn't necessarily build on each other as well. You might miss some content if there's conflicts in one day. Just, just an add-on, we could try to recombine it. Give me some additional guidance.
Were there any particular weekends were problematic?
Well, October 2nd had several events. So, maybe instead of a morning, it could be an afternoon, or something like that, because we have, you know, several things going on, and I just didn't want to miss Fire Safety Day, because that's a public safety event, and I'm very much in support of all things public safety, just saying.
We serve together. I get it.
So, Martha, can I, can I just, so Martha, the one thing, the one thing that's on the calendar for the second is the Smart Shuttle start. Can we somehow incorporate that in the morning activities with us, or, because I think that we all wanted to be a part of that, too.
So, the Smart City launch would be a very quick thing at 8:00, that, that we could move back a little bit. It, it would just be the, the Smart Shuttle launch is staged there. I, I think that we've talked about council could take a ride, so we could move that one back. We, we were trying to keep your afternoons free, but we, that would be a modification that would probably be simple for the police department. I know that Chief, Chief Andrews texted me late this afternoon that, that they had sort of confirmed the days, or scheduled the rooms, but a, a time difference of an hour or so, if that's what they're asking about, I do not think that would be an issue for her.
Okay, because I'll, I'll tell you right now, I put these dates on my calendar. I cannot do the afternoon specifically on the 2nd. I, I have to.
Leave right at noon?
So, but anyhow.
And I, I can't recall when Fire Safety Day is. I'm sorry.
I, I don't have that on the 2nd, so.
I thought, I put together the calendar.
Fire Safety Day, and September 11th Memorial.
Yeah, I thought there is a, there was on the events, the town website, there was Fire Safety Day. At least there was two days ago. I have the Fire Department Open House is on September 11th.
You're so funny.
So, perhaps we can have staff take a real deep dive into the schedule of the.
Fire Safety Day, look.
The police, and then see where the conflicts are, and maybe come back with some ideas of how we don't miss things.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, where are we? Because are we keeping?
10:00 AM is Fire Safety Day.
I'm sorry, say again?
10:00 AM is Fire Safety Day.
No, she's right. I thought she made it up, but there is.
That's usually till 2:00, right?
She's not making it up.
That's usually till 2:00, so we'd still get the last two hours of that one.
Is, is that for the youth?
Oh, what time is it? That's a good time.
Fire Safety Day?
It's at 2:00.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to check on that.
Yeah.
So, that's for the youth.
Would it be okay for staff to take a look at that and send us an email and see to where we're at, and if they moved that one by an hour on the 2nd? It'd be a choice of missing the last hour of a four-hour class, or missing the Smart Shuttle, so one or the other. So, we can make our choices. Sorry?
Smart Shuttle's pretty important.
Yep, I understand.
Let's take the Smart Shuttle to the police station.
You, you can give the Smart Shuttle driver the first ticket, you know, you can go behind your car.
Give you a special ride on Friday.
Yeah, exactly.
But I appreciate you bringing this forward, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, because I, I do enjoy all the events, and I do enjoy our trainings as well, so it'd be nice to be able to do both.
It's just because there was more than one event that I felt it was important that I raised this challenge. Yep, I appreciate it. Thank you. I do not have any roundtable. I just wanted to kind of share.
Okay. Does anyone have any really quick roundtable item that they'd like to just mention for the benefit of everybody?
I, I don't.
You have four minutes if you got it.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, not, not seeing any of that, well.
Andrews suggests postponing.
Postponing?
The entire.
I think you've made her angry.
I'm sorry, what?
I think you've made her angry.
Oh. If she can train us on the Smart Shuttle as we're going around town, I think that's a win-win.
So, staff will dig into that a little bit, and follow up with all of us on that. So, we do appreciate all the effort that's already gone in to try to plan that for us, and for all the events that are gonna be going on in the town. There's lots of great things going on this fall. Yeah. Yeah, so, we're looking forward to that, and we thank you. And we'll do what we can to work together to try to make sure that we can all enjoy all the different activities that are being presented. Do you have anything else for the good of the order?
I do. There is a wet down ceremony on Saturday. Only two of you have confirmed.
Oh.
Who is planning on attending?
This Saturday?
Yes.
What time?
I thought that was like a given. I, I was.
I did not reply. Now it's.
We get the soaker then?
And it's not at Fire Station 1. It is, it is at Fire Station 2. That's important to know, because everything's usually.
10:00 AM, I think, a program, and then there'll be a little bit of break for the senior center open house that begins at noon. And that's noon till 2:00.
Correct.
You also received an email from Jerry Allen on that one, and it was a news and notes. But an R S B P was asked for, for the wet down ceremony. So, did I see everybody's things for 10:00 AM?
Wet down, everybody coming to that?
Oh, my gosh, that's so much fun.
What do they do?
Pardon me?
What do they do in wet down?
It's, it's a ceremonial thing to sort of baptize a new truck.
So, it's not a champagne bottle on the bow of a ship?
Yeah, are they slamming?
Who, who breaks a bottle of champagne?
Oh, champagne.
Okay, and Jeannie says she has one, and I'd like to just talk to council after we adjourn together for one minute as a group as well.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time?
I have the, I have the whole thing.
Aye.
I want to check in with you on, just before you're reading on August 24th, we're trying to coordinate with Helen, that are our library, and your personal library. We've had some whole dominated books that were from a past initiative to really bring awareness about the library, because it's been news and notes. And I'm trying to coordinate with her on that day around 5:00 or 5:15, for a photo op opportunity to really pass out for these books that they can use in their fundraising efforts for the library to buy new books. And we want to use the photo op to really showcase the library and get people to come out and get a card and join the library and use the facilities that they have.
Is that at the library or at, or here?
At the library. Helen suggests that we do our picture taking on the plaza, take the opportunity with artwork that's there, and we'll make sure that we pass off the books. We work, our art department group has actually helped, and they clean them up, inventory them, and ready to go.
Okay.
So, I'm sending an email, or Will's gonna send an email tomorrow. If you can do that, that would be wonderful. She would certainly appreciate it. And we're gonna try to invite some former council member that was a part of this initiative previously, it may or may not, but they may or may not work for her.
Thank you, Jeannie.
That is very exciting.
Did you say 5:00 o'clock, or did I just put it?
I have a private team works with Helen.
Okay.
We're trying to block that.
What date?
Before the 24th meeting, so our next meeting, next week, next Tuesday. So, if you could get here early, it'd be really nice, if possible. We know that's challenging for full-time employees, so, thank you for that.
Thank you for doing that, Jeannie.
Thanks.
Yeah. That'll be wonderful. Will that be open to the public?
It's a photo opportunity that's just a quick exchange, just a snapshot and handoff of books. So, that's really what it is, just occurring together, you know, why these books existed, and then to celebrate the library.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. Anything else for the good of the order, town manager? That's all set. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn? From Councilmember Garamella, is that a second from Councilmember Row?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. 7-0 is 9-0-1. Thank you all. Good meeting tonight.